Okay, the button is up.
Takes two to launch a message.
Okay, call to order the meeting, the Caribou Planning Board, January 7, 2015. First item is electing chairman for the 2015 Planning Board. Do we have any suggestions for the chairmanship?
Well, Mr. --
Status quo.
I make the motion that we elect Phil Seer as the chairman for 2015.
Second.
Been motioned and seconded, that I continue in the position. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, I guess I'm it. Next item, electing vice chairman for 2015. Do we have any suggestions, volunteers, for vice chairman?
I don't see why we can't stick with what we had for the year.
Okay. Except he's --
Nominate Jim.
All right, is that, is there, we need a second to that?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, Jim Serrato, continue as vice chair. All in favor? Electing secretary for the 2015 Planning Board. And who has been our secretary?
Bob, that was you.
That was Bob, yeah.
That's me.
That's you.
Yeah.
You want to continue?
Sure.
Like to autograph that? Okay.
Make a motion that Bob White continues the secretary position for 2015.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Setting of 2015 meeting dates and times. We've been doing the first Monday.
First Wednesday.
Excuse me, Wednesday. First Wednesday of every month. Is that satisfactory for everybody to continue, or?
That's fine by me.
Yeah.
Okay, can we have a motion to that effect?
I move we keep the meeting times at the same date and same time for calendar year 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We now --
I make a motion that we adjourn the organizational meeting for --
Moved and seconded, we adjourn, oh, was it seconded?
Yep.
The 2015 organizational meeting of the Caribou Planning Board. All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Turn the page. And now we --
You just call the next order.
Call to order the regular Caribou Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, January 7, 2015. First item on the agenda, minutes of the November 5, 2014 meeting. May I have a motion to accept the minutes as distributed?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, minutes be accepted as distributed. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next item, all business nuisance property ordinance. My recollection is the nuisance property ordinance was sent to our legal counsel for review, has been returned to us. And, and I have read it, and I have only two items. On, under item D, the item D 1A, very last line, I think the of should be or. Occurrences of nuisance conduct at the same apartment unit in any 60-day period, or 10 or more occurrences at the same unit in any one-year period. I think that's a typo.
Yep.
The F should be an R. And going to the opposite page, on item C3, it's the question of how mailed, is bracketed, so I don't know if we just want to say that it is mailed C3. Right there.
That's a question.
Right. And so, this is regarding the notice to the property owner. I think we had discussed this once before, and we had talked about certified mail with return receipt, which is less expensive than registered mail, but pretty much accomplishes the same thing.
That ought to do it.
So, certified mail with return receipt.
Would that, would that, would the certified mailing requirement be included under a different section? Or is that, is that, where does it reference? I see the how mailed part. Does it say somewhere else that it's to be mailed?
It does.
Well, there's another section where it says if the officer delivers, hand delivers it, or if it was mailed, or.
Yeah.
Certified mail.
Yeah, there was another paragraph. I can't find it right off.
Section D number three.
Three.
Yep.
Notice authorized, required herein shall be deemed delivered to the owner as follows.
Ah, so we just need to delete the bracketed language.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, so, so on, under C3, you're saying we don't need to address that because it's addressed in?
D3.
In D3?
Yep.
Any notice authorized herein? Okay, well then, so?
We could reference D3 as to, or, under C, make number five, notice shall be given in accordance with D3 as well. Just so it's a little bit more clear as to how that notice.
Repeat the method, rather than just?
Just reference it, you don't have to repeat it.
Right. So, are you saying at the end of C3, we put?
Reference.
C, D, uh, three?
Put it in item five, under C.
Add item, okay, so we?
Notice shall be delivered according to the procedure in D3.
Okay.
I think that would work.
Okay. So, we're going to add a number five under C? Any notice delivered will be as described in D3.
We'll be sort of duplicative at that point. The one under D3, it's kind of like, catches everything, it says any notice under this whole thing, and then to pick out one area where you cited a different time.
You might be right, we don't, maybe don't need it at all.
Then somebody might look at a different section and say, well, why doesn't it reference a specific mailing requirement?
So, you're interpreting D3 applicable to the entire ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, so you'd either, you'd either want to do something specific each place, or just one generalized statement?
Simpler is always better.
Right, would it be better to pull it out of D3 and create a whole new section?
I think if we move D3 into C, because the C covers the notice, the meeting, and property owners, and that would, for all intents and purposes, be notification versus the declaration of chronic nuisance property.
Or you could have an independent section, you know, you got A, B, C, D, and just one is any notice, it's going to be this way.
Any notice required under this ordinance?
We've got, we've got two issues here. C is a notice.
It's a declaration of a chronic.
C is a notice to the property owner that a, that a nuisance conduct has taken place, which is a less severe issue than item D, where the property is being declared a nuisance property because they've had five or more document, five or more occurrences in the prior 60 days, or 10 or more. In other words, you're talking a different severity of, and I can, so I don't know if we want to go back to C3, and, I mean, D talks about, you know, potentially having it served by a Caribou Police Officer. I guess I'm wondering, do we need that type of additional delivery method discussed, or?
Point, we're just mailing a certified letter or something.
Right, but I mean, the way, the way that starts out in D3, it says any notice, so I mean, I guess it all depends on where we're going to leave notices within this ordinance.
Well?
Because a notice would follow, to me, would follow under C, because it's.
Well, as titled.
Our lawyers. Any, any, any notice authorized or required herein, does herein mean in section D?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, we need something in C to say how we're going to do it in C.
Well, just.
First-class mail.
Let's, let's go back to say certified mail, return receipt.
Yeah.
Go back to the?
Because we're just notifying them.
Well, it's an important thing, because if they, and I think return receipt is good, because if somebody says, well, what are you talking about? I've had 10 notices. I didn't receive anything in the mail, you know, whereas if you've got the return receipt, then you've got proof of delivery.
Under D3, part B, it says if mailed by ordinary first-class mail. So, if we're going to request return receipt on, for a general notice?
Oh, wow.
We should probably request or require a certified mail.
That falls, that's under part A of D3.
Right, so D3A is?
Certified.
Certified mailed. D3B is if mailed by ordinary first-class mail.
Right.
So, if we want to try and keep things the same, we should?
What, do we want to remove that first-class mail and keep it all certified with the receipt?
For record-keeping purposes, I think that'd be better.
Yeah, I think, I think taking D out and change C to be, so that you're either going to go certified mail, or you're going to be served by a Caribou Police Officer. Does that sound good to everybody?
Works for me.
And then under C3, we said we're just going to leave it as certified mail?
Certified mail, return receipt.
With receipt.
We were adding, did we add a number five? We added a number five under C, saying any notice delivered?
We'll, we'll add number, number five.
Should be delivered?
Be the same as D3, and we're going to strike the first-class mail.
Oh, just, just leave.
Be delivered as?
Just do D3A. You don't need the police officer in that.
Well, time may be of the essence.
I mean, that way, we're covered under both options of it.
I mean, if you're going to go certified mail, and it's the 4th of July weekend, and they're not going to get anything for three or four days.
All right, let me then.
PD may say, let's get this to the homeowner.
I'll be devil's advocate then, all right? If, if, if you're going to have that same condition, three, over here in C, why not just have a separate article someplace within the law that says, all notices under this law shall be delivered the following way? I mean, why duplicate it in two different places?
I yield to the attorney on the end of the table.
Say, what, the question again? I'm reading as something else here. Did I say it once?
He's, he's, he's saying, just saying what?
Somewhere in the body of the law.
Yes.
Make it as, as J, as far as delivery notification, and then take D3 and put that in there?
That works.
Maybe just an independent section that says notice, notices, notice.
Delivery of notices.
Yep.
So, we made, so we're going to make a J. Delivery of notices. And we'll just copy.
Use D3.
And we'll just copy D3. And so, D4 becomes D3 because there's no more D3.
Correct. Are we taking out the ordinary first-class mail?
Yes, yeah, we're taking out B.
Yep.
So, certified mail, return receipt, or served by a Caribou Police Officer, or other person authorized.
Okay.
Are there any other suggested changes to this ordinance by anybody?
Usually, you beat this section to death here, but usually if you have to serve somebody in person, so process in person, the rules of civil procedure require to be a deputy sheriff, not a local police officer. And some of the officers are part-time deputy sheriffs that serve things.
Yep.
But maybe it just, take out the reference.
Caribou Police.
Either say personally served in accordance with the main rules of civil procedure, or keep in the Caribou Police and get rid of the main rules of civil procedure.
You're saying there's a contradiction there?
Yeah.
Because you're saying both. You're saying Caribou Police Officer, and you're also saying main rule of civil procedure.
Yeah, somebody might say that you're required to serve me with a Caribou PD officer, and according to these rules, the rules don't permit the Caribou Police Officer, but we don't have to necessarily play by the rules at this point in the game.
Well, why not just delete Caribou Police Officer, and let us say person authorized to affect service?
Perfect, yeah, I think that would, that would.
Serve, so we're going to take out A.
If we do it in conformity with the main rule of civil procedure, we'd have to use a sheriff.
Right.
Which would add cost.
Yeah, but?
Because we'd have to pay. Whereas if we have an officer do it.
But if your officer is a deputy sheriff?
They'd still have to be dressed in their deputy sheriff uniform.
Well, our plain clothes, yeah.
Yeah, they get a, you got to pay a fee, it's something, and it's like 15 or 20 bucks, I think.
Less than we did, it was about 35 or 40, so. If we have a Caribou Officer do it, which we can, they can do it on their shift.
Yep.
We don't have to pay anything extra.
So, did you say remove?
Well, right.
The end of it, sent forth in the main rule of civil procedure?
Right.
And just keep it as a person within the Caribou Police Department?
Right now, we're, we've got a certified mail, return receipt, and then we go to or, except we don't have the word or, maybe we should, or Caribou PD, or main rule of civil procedure.
Yeah, it depends on how you read that. The grammar might not be real good. You're saying it could be a Caribou Police Officer, or another person authorized, and all this other stuff, meet, all the stuff about main rules of civil procedure apply to the other person.
So, do we want to make?
Yes.
Do we want to make a break at the or, and make C, other person authorized to affect the service, the process? So, that way, we have the letter, we have either a Caribou Officer, or we have a deputy sheriff to serve them.
We have to rewrite the whole thing if we start putting a C in there.
Because at that point, if the, if the property owner's living out of town, then we're going to have to default to C, because we're not going to send somebody from police department.
Well, yeah, but you've still got A.
Right, but then if that doesn't work?
Why wouldn't it work? US mail.
Right, but if they don't sign it and take it?
Oh. You have that option, not to sign?
Well, if you.
If you don't take delivery.
If you don't take delivery of it.
Don't answer the door. Yeah, that's true. That's true.
So, I think, I think we should put a break in there and make C, in case we have to.
Well, I don't know, I, I don't see a problem with the way it's currently written of Caribou PD, or other person authorized as blah, 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 blah. I don't know, I mean, it's.
I guess I would maybe make, break it up into?
A, B, and C?
Right, three sections with A being certified mail, yeah.
Not that I'm in court all the time, but, I mean, is somebody really going to pick that apart like that?
Take the?
If they're, if they're losing, definitely, yeah.
Take the, you can get rid of the, you don't need the C, and all the words that go with it. If you simply take the phrase, or other person, to the end, and put that in parentheses.
Say again?
Take the phrase.
Are we keeping the Caribou Police Officer?
Police Officer.
Caribou Police Officer.
Take the phrase that begins, or other person.
And do what?
Marry that to the rules, the main rules of civil procedure by putting that whole phrase into a parentheses.
What?
That makes it very clear that the main rule of civil procedure applies to the other person, but not to the Caribou Police Officer.
I think it does that already, because when it says or other person authorized?
I know, I know it does it already, except people might misread it. I'm saying make it clear.
That's all I'm saying.
But the rules don't have to apply to anybody. Like, if, we can get, we could get rid of the rules, because we're not taking them. At some point, if, if somebody pushes it so far that you're going to file a complaint against them and take them into court, then you have to file, follow those rules whether you want to or not. But before then, we're not really bound by them.
At what point do you go to, go to court in the ordinance I can't?
After 10, let's see, five or more?
Under D, right?
Five or more in the past 60 days, or 10 or more in the past year.
Can we go to court?
No, that's meeting with the police chief.
You're enforcing it at the municipal?
No, no, that's where, yeah, we're still enforcing it. Yeah, we don't go to court only, we only go to court later on.
Under violations.
When the person ignores the whole thing and doesn't cooperate.
Yep.
Yeah, once there's violation, then you would.
Once we progress to G and H.
Matt, do you think?
Do you think we just don't need that phrase?
How do you?
Yeah, just put Caribou, person authorized by law, or Caribou Police Officer.
Or authorized to affect service of process, and then scratch the inconformity crap?
Yep.
So, we put a period after the word process and cut out after inconformity?
I would.
Okay, okay.
Now, legal, our legal has already looked at this, right?
Right.
Is there a problem with it?
No.
Are you asking if, because we're making some of these changes, can I have to go back to him again?
That's what I guess is another question.
No, let the city council decide that.
I think we would run it by some type of legal service, either MMA Legal or our own city attorney before.
Well, I mean, previously, before we started messing with, with this, we changed of to or, and we added a mailing process on, on the prior page where the question was asked, how mailed?
Right.
So, we basically were doing?
If we're going to make editorial changes like that, that's no problem.
Right, but.
They're getting more substantive.
But now they are.
Yeah.
And I'm, I don't know.
What, putting a?
I didn't see a.
Putting a J, delivery of notices, to blanket, to blanket the whole document, there's nothing wrong with that.
Right, we just?
Right, so that, that's where we ended up, well, I don't know, yeah, we.
Right, right now.
What was the last thing we did? We added a number five, and then we added a J?
No, we removed the five.
We moved everything to J.
Okay, so we got rid of the five.
We moved D3 to J.
And so, the question is?
And we dropped the last phrase.
I think dropping the last phrase is where we're starting to change the substance.
That's, yeah.
And so?
I guess we're not the final word on it anyway.
No.
Now, suggest these changes and, and see where it goes, I mean.
Okay, let's, let's do that.
Because we still have person authorized to affect service of process.
Yeah, that's true. So, there's some legal insinuation.
There's an authorization there.
Yeah. Okay. So, are we good with that?
I think it's pretty good.
Okay, so, do we need, we've had a public hearing on this, we've accepted it, we've sent it to the legal, to the city attorney, he's sent it back with a couple changes which we just made, and so now, you want a motion to accept and forward to the city council?
I think we need a hearing in its final form. Don't we? Before we can make that motion to send to council?
Right, because it was presented in one form, and then we've made changes to it subsequently, so I would think that it's.
There's been a lot of changes since the last hearing.
We had a public hearing two months ago, I think.
We had, what, three people? Or was that, that was a workshop?
Mr. Libby showed, uh, workshop.
We had a workshop three months ago.
Yep. Mr. Libby showed up and.
Mr. Richards.
And pardon?
I don't think that was a public hearing.
Right, no, it was just a workshop.
Public hearing?
So, we have a form.
My recommendation would be just, for a public relations standpoint, let's hold another public hearing at the planning board, and we can act to send it to the council after that.
So, do we want to schedule a public hearing at our next meeting for this?
We can do that.
Yeah, if you can get this cleaned up and sent out to interested parties in time.
Okay, so it'll be put on our agenda and advertised the necessary time prior to the meeting?
Correct. Yep, and would the board like us to send notice to?
Landlords?
Interested parties, landlord, landlords, or?
I think so.
Yeah.
Some of them, they've received this.
A few times.
Yeah, I was going to say at least twice before.
Right.
They might, they might say, you know, why can't we get our act together?
Well, I think we're trying to work with.
We're trying to.
We're trying to work with them, we're made of, kind of.
We're not working against them, we're trying to work with them.
Yeah.
All right, so, do we want a motion for this? Can I have a motion to schedule this for public hearing next time?
Yeah, since I pushed it, I saw move.
Second.
And that motion requests notice to potential land, or to landlords?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm going to make sure.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Next item, manufactured housing ordinance.
This ordinance, I apologize, I thought this had been in front of the planning board before, apparently it has not.
Yeah, it kind of surprised me.
Yeah, the planning board, or, sorry, the mobile home committee has been looking at it. They are meeting next Tuesday. The board can certainly look at this and discuss things, and kind of provide some general feedback that we can take to that committee if they would like. Otherwise, the committee will meet next Tuesday to discuss.
I was, I was going to make a motion that we tabled, because the committee hadn't, hadn't met on the final draft of this, so.
So, you, you're on that committee?
I'm on that committee, yeah.
And they've not met on the final draft?
No, because we just, Austin just emailed it to us a couple days ago, yeah.
Was there as much changes to this as there was on the nuisance property that we just went through?
No, we just, this is pretty good. I mean, I read through it, I don't feel, have you had chance of?
Yeah, basically, what we, what we really did was we cleaned up, I believe, there's two sections in the code there, one for mobile home parks, and then naturally the rest of it. We cleaned up some of the redundancy and channeled it all, and added some language in there to protect the municipality from people bringing trailers in unauthorized, or stuff like that.
I have to be honest with you, when I saw the, without seeing the bylaw, when I saw the discussion of manufactured home bylaw, my mind went in a different direction, which was prefab houses. And so, this took me by surprise.
This is a?
This is more, obviously, it's mobile homes. But I didn't realize that when I saw the general discussion.
The only thing I saw, just in reading through it, that I thought might be worth some discussion was under B, the part where it says the names of adult occupants, if not owner occupied, said the list must be submitted annually to the assessor's office in January each year, but should there be something else in there that if the tenants of those particular properties change, that something be sent to the city to notify them that, you know, trailer B, Joe Smith moved out, and?
What purpose?
Why does the assessor want that information?
What purpose does it serve for the city to know who's living in what mobile home? I mean, I, I thought when you started speaking about that, you were going to suggest the whole thing be thrown out, not add to it.
And I guess I don't remember us talking about that in the committee meeting, I guess, but.
But this was the revised view from legal, right?
What's the city going to do with that?
I think the assessor needs to know about the manufacturer and the model number.
Tax, tax purposes of the, of the trailer.
For the owner, not necessarily the tenants living in there.
Well, I think they want the owner slash tenant, okay? You'd be, you're, you're a tenant in the park, you could be the owner.
Well, if you are the owner, the assessor needs to know, because it's personal property. But if you're just a tenant, the assessor does not need to know.
No, doesn't need to know the tenant's name, unless the tenant is the owner. And I think that that's where that came from.
Did you have? Go ahead.
We wouldn't want to know in January, we'd want to know as of April 1, anyway, because that's the only day that matters to us, is the status of the property April 1, period, for the whole year.
Does, does?
But who the tenant is, it's been customary that when we get the mobile home park census, that it tells us who owns the mobile home and who occupies the mobile home.
Okay, so this is not new?
No.
Okay.
But then?
But why we have them, I don't know, that was done prior to, it's just, it's always been done that way.
Yeah.
Does it really need to know? However, I do have those on the public drive and, and when they have been helpful is to our general admin, our general assistance administrator. Sometimes she will ask me, and I'll say it's on the P drive, who we have a record living there, because someone may come to her for general assistance. And at least that's kind of confirmation that yes, they live there. If I have a record they live there, then they probably live there. It's not just them saying that they live there.
How often has that verification taken place on average?
Oh, maybe twice a year.
Twice a year? How many mobile home occupants are we talking?
You mean that are not owners?
Right.
Yeah, no.
I mean, is there a hundred or is there five hundred?
Only one time, because you have, you have mobile homes that get condemned and no one lives there, and we have ones that get moved out of town, we have ones that are just destroyed because they're no longer able to be lived in, have some that the people end up buying, you know, but.
So do we want to leave it in there and change the, the January to April, or do you want it in March, so you have it prior?
No, April first is the day. So I mean, if they get that to me sometime in April is fine, but it's, it's more about what the status is of that mobile home, April one.
Well, we're not creating a new, new requirement, it's something that park owners, park owners have been doing for years.
So that, that should be up for that committee to, to make those changes then, correct?
I think if the owner or is subletting, you don't necessarily need to know who they're subletting to, okay?
They, it's just always was that way, but it doesn't matter to me not knowing.
The way, the way that I read this is that I'm the mobile home park owner and you have your trailer, your own trailer on my park, so you're my tenant. So I think that that's what the intent of this was, and I don't think that's why we messed with that language at all. That's the way I interpreted it when I read it a long time ago, but that's.
So then you mentioned tabling this?
I, yeah, I mean, only because the committee actually hasn't met on this final draft, because this has come back from legal.
Yep.
Um, so we really haven't had a chance to sit down on the table and talk about this.
You have a meeting when?
Next Tuesday night.
I have one more question, I don't mind tabling, I have one more question.
Not that I like to table anything, but I.
I recall a conversation some time ago, I don't know if it's pertinent to this or not, where the discussion was about jurisdiction or inspection of, I'm being vague because my memory is vague, of the, the trailers that are used by migrant workers. One of the farmers was in and had a question.
That was back, yeah, that was back, yeah.
So it doesn't need to be in here?
No.
Okay.
No, that was to, to.
I think that's what started this.
To allow.
I think that's what started this.
Well, that was to allow a lesser snow load.
Yeah, snow load issues, yeah.
For unoccupied, the fact that they were unoccupied during the winter season.
Right.
Some, some of the, some of the question, or some of the answer to the question that Bob was just asking is that, under the Department of Labor, anybody that houses migrant workers in, regardless of what facility, is, is required to be inspected annually. I think that pretty much covers that.
Right.
And it just so happens that one of the, one of the farmers does have manufactured homes for housing, okay? So there's an annual requirement for that, and this does not impact that.
Okay.
So if this is gonna be reviewed by committee in a week, if they.
The committee would review it, make recommendations, changes, we would implement that, and then they're, they would recommend something to the planning board.
Then it would come back to us next month.
You mean, it could be on next month or it could be, it could be March, right?
Well, let's.
Depending on how.
Depending on what the committee has on hand.
Well, we'll, we'll deal with it again when you're ready to have us do it.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we table the mobile home, um, what is this, ordinance, ordinance.
Manufactured.
Until the committee has a chance to review the legal portion of it.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? New business. Twenty fifteen topics to be addressed. Tony left us a shopping list.
It's easy for him to send that big list to us.
Uh.
For the board to decide what we would actually like to try and accomplish for this year.
Well, is, uh, would you happen to know if the list that you sent us on the memo dated January seven, which starts with complete new zoning map, is that list arranged in priority order?
I don't believe that was in any particular order, I think it was just a list of things to, that he had.
I'm wondering if, I mean, if it were up to me, I would say, I would ask you to review it, uh, put those tasks which logically should be done before others, ahead on the list, to establish a priority, and then we'll just chew away at it as time permits.
Sure, and I've kind of, in the last paragraph there, it'd be my recommendation that we would begin the rewrite of chapter thirteen before doing the work on a new zoning map or a land use table. I think the zoning ordinance as a whole come first before you get the zoning map or the land use table. Those are the biggest things that will take the most amount of time. I think reviewing the setback and lot size requirements are going to be a part of that whole process.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the nuisance ordinance, we're well on our way there, and the mobile home ordinance, I think we can take that when it comes back. So that would kind of be my recommendation, I guess, is to begin the chapter thirteen rewrite and the others kind of fall into line with that.
Well, sounds good, if you could rework the order to be in, you know, logical priority, and we'll just. So his, his list becomes our, our work list for the year. Yes, we have a question?
I, I think probably one thing to keep in mind when we, when we are looking at the prioritization of this is that the zoning maps and the land use tables are incorporated in chapter thirteen. And some of the rationale to look at the tables and the maps was also to complement the comprehensive plan when it came back, so it would be reflective of, at all.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is all really the second or third or fourth steps after getting the comprehensive plan approved, so.
Okay, so, uh, is a motion on that needed now?
I don't think we need a motion necessary, I'll send out a copy of the, I guess, prioritize list to the, to the board and we'll start checking that off. For the next meeting, we'll start working on the chapter thirteen, everybody should have a copy of that, if you want to start going through when.
A new, a new copy?
We can get you a new copy, yeah.
Well, Denise, right. Okay, next item, zoning board of appeals ordinance.
This was on the list from the two thousand fifteen, uh, work for two thousand fifteen was an update of the book, Board of Appeals ordinance, and I do not know the history of this request, I don't know if the planning board is initiating or if Mr. Mizuka was, but Counselor McDonough appears to know.
I think, uh, little history on this is the reason why this board, or this portion of it was established like this is that over three, four, maybe even five years ago, lacked participation in the, in the zoning board and lacked voluntary system, so the then CEO established this, stating that they would use CEOs from around the county if we, if we have been needed in the zoning board of appeals, they're more familiar with the process and would be probably a better process. Fortunately for us, we haven't had any issues where we've had to exercise that, so I guess that's maybe because we're doing big sound planning. But it's not, it's not advantageous to us not, right now, to have, have the control over it, and it probably needs to go back to locally filled position. Is that, I think that's pretty much what he was looking at.
And it, it very well could be, I think the fact that we haven't had any variance requests in six years speaks to the planning that we have in place.
Yeah.
But I also question what kind of priority this would be if this needs to be done, or if this should just be done as part of a chapter thirteen rewrite, which would be kind of my recommendation.
My own opinion is that the zoning board should, Board of Appeals, whichever we want to call it, it's the same group of people. Probably should be just like the planning board, appointed by city council.
And they are.
And we can write that, and we can work that into.
They are appointed by the city council, right now it's made up of local code enforcement officers from around the county.
One of, sorry, one, one of my, I, I can see, well, first of all, it's taken me a year or two to figure out half of what's going on at the planning board level, okay? Let alone, uh, the appeals board should be that much more knowledgeable. And if, unless you're gonna pick from former planning board members who are up to speed education wise, if, if this is something that comes to task once every four years, you know, it's gonna take two decades for the group to be educated and up to speed on issues. You know, the whole idea of having, uh, the CEOs, uh, code enforcement officers from around the county be the Board of Appeals, I thought was creative in putting knowledgeable people to handle the situation.
I have a different take on it. I think putting CEOs on that board biases that board in favor of planning board actions. My, my past experience has zoning board of appeals, where I came from, we, all these boards were elected, not appointed, but caribou chooses to appoint. In any case, the boards, planning boards, zoning boards, other boards, were all made up of citizens of the town with no special expertise, other than maybe one or two had years of experience. But, um, I personally don't think we should be taint, not tainting, but, but loading this board up with CEOs, because they've all got their own personal slant on this or that project.
I agree.
Okay, I can see that point.
And I, I think there's enough, enough people in the town that have been on the board in the past or something that you could mean, find to donate some time maybe, I, I don't know. Well, and if we are gonna be looking at this as part of the chapter thirteen rewrite, we could maybe make it a condition that they have prior experience.
I wouldn't even do that.
On the planning board? Matt, you look like you wanted to say something.
Well, I think, like, they're, I think it's pros, in, in terms of like assembling a, a critical mass of expertise, probably using the CEOs' works. But in any situation where they're called on to, uh, it's not black and white and they're called on to exercise some discretion, it would seem they ought to be from caribou. It'd be like, like, uh, you know, having five representatives from New England to make decisions about something that would happen in the state of Maine, and it, when it's not black and white and it, you could, you know, call it one way or the other. You'd want the decisions about, you know, state of Maine be from, made by people from, from the state of Maine, have, has some stake in the outcome a little bit more.
You don't want CEOs from other communities giving thumbs down to projects that would enhance caribou.
Yeah, well, I don't know that that would happen, but, yeah, that, that could be an extreme example.
The potential exists. Potential exists.
I, I think, as everybody from last night's training will recall, the standard that you have to meet to grant a variance or an appeal is quite high.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that's kind of where the, the problem lies, I know in some communities, some Board of Appeals are more lax than probably what they should be, and I've seen that in previous communities where I've been too, but it's, really, it's going to be up to the board to be certain that they are following law as to how they are granting appeals.
Well, and those, I mean, I questioned in last night, last night's training, if the standards for granting a variance weren't unreasonably high. I mean, I characterize them as counter, uh, productive as far as growth.
Well, they're there on purpose, because it's our job to manage the growth. It's the ZBA's job to take a second look at us in case we might have made a mistake, but they're, they're not supposed to be a pro-growth organization, they're supposed to be a, did you follow the law organization?
Okay, because you had mentioned last night the possibility that we could maybe adopt ordinances that soften some of those standards?
You can, you can, you can write ordinances to, to locally that decide that decree what the ZBA can and can't do and how to do it.
Sounds to me like we, you know, this is a discussion we're gonna have in the rewrite of chapter thirteen.
Right, and I, I think if you have solid planning, I, I don't think you have to worry about the Board of Appeals all that much, because if you have solid planning, you're gonna be able to fall back on that as your strategy for growth in the community. What you allow in certain areas and what you don't allow in other areas.
And I, and I think that based on some of the historical changes that have been done to the chapter thirteen in the past have softened some of that, and I think that that's probably why we saw less and less activity as far as the zoning board of appeals, because for instance, the lady talked about setbacks last night, okay? In a residential one area, there used to be ten on the side and twenty on the back, and they've relaxed that down to five and ten, as an example, I think it's still twenty front, twenty in the front. But that seemed to alleviate a lot of problems right there. And then I think that maybe in some of the other areas where corn is and being on two streets and stuff like that, there were some adjustments made because, stuff like that. But you have to be careful from the planning board perspective, that you don't soften them up too much to where you jeopardize potentially safety for fire egress and ingress and so on and so forth. I guess what you don't want to do is you don't want something to go to the zoning board and they come back and say this and that, so on and so forth, so you go and you relax the standard a little bit more to lessen the impact of what the zoning board appeals has to say. So I think part of the reason why we saw a decrease in activity or in, in, uh, participation on the zoning board of appeals is was they were never meeting.
Right, if, well, no one's.
They were never meeting because there weren't necessarily any issues.
There's not gonna be an appeal if there's, hasn't been some major project approved in the first place.
Right.
And then there has, even if one is approved, then there has to be somebody that doesn't like it. Or before that can be an appeal.
If they haven't had any of those issues thankfully, you know?
Right, I mean, if we're not in a, in a heavy growth situation, uh, I come from an area where the planning board was swamped, I mean, we would be doing detailed site reviews for hours, once or twice a month, just the way it was done down there. And so that tells you there was a lot of growth happening in the town and a lot of decisions being made, and right behind it was a very busy and very active ZBA because somebody didn't like what we said. But, but that's a different situation, we don't have that up here.
Okay, so right now, what you've presented us, which is the code enforcement officers from the region are our zoning board of appeals, as it stands today.
Correct.
And so this has been brought forward for, to, for potential rewrite, and so we'll look at it in chapter thirteen, or should we act on it separate of chapter thirteen?
My recommendation would be to do it as part of chapter thirteen, because it was on the, on the, uh, list of work for two thousand fifteen, I wasn't sure where it came from, that's why it's up here tonight, but my recommendation would be to do it as part of the whole rewrite.
So then let's take that ordinance and put it in with the other list which you're going to prioritize and put it in proper placement.
Makes sense to me.
And, uh, we'll take care of it then.
Perfect.
And I, I appreciate your, your expertise, your big city.
Uh, it's not a big city.
Been there, done that.
It was, when I was there, the town population, it was still a town, was not much bigger than what the city of Caribou is, it's just, it was in an area where there was a lot of growth. Both industrial and commercial and residential, uh, it's a different, different animal down there than it is here.
Well, let's hope we get that problem here.
Oh, it would be a different problem.
Okay, um, so is there any other business to come before?
I just have a question with regards to a follow-up, um, from the design, the site design application for Henry Burgess that we had at our last meeting where it was, we hadn't signed off on anything subsequent to it being inspected by Tony and Chief Susie with regards to life safety code, I was just wondering where that was at.
I was not aware of that, we'll certainly check into that and report back to the board.
I think it was done, but I don't think the communication is made back yet, so we might want to follow up.
Right, I'll chat with Chief Susie and I'll get back with the board on that.
Yeah, if, if that's been done and it's been approved, then we have no action.
Right, we just need to sign off on it.
We need to sign.
I, I think I asked that question at our. Highway of protection, we intended to have that, we have that general discussion, and I think that was. One of, one of them or maybe one of the other had gone, but the other one hadn't, but I don't think they probably were necessarily one of them.
Is there any other business to be brought before us?
I don't have any.
May I have more adjourned?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment? Thank you, meeting is adjourned.